This conference will now be recorded.
Regular selectmen's meeting Monday, April 6, 2027 p.m. Called a meeting to order. Members present, Ralph Fletcher. Catherine Silversmith. Are you on Catherine?
Yes, I am Catherine Silversmith.
Hey, thank you. Hear from the public, anybody here from the public? Not heard. First selectmen's briefing. Unfortunately, we're in a period of time that we've never experienced before. However, we must continue to be diligent and follow the rules that are set forth by the state of Connecticut. It's the only way we're going to be able to through this difficult time. Hear from boards. Hear from boards, commissions, and committees. Hearing none, move on to the acceptance of the regular minutes of February 18, 2020, and a special meeting of March 4, 2020.
So moved. So moved.
Second?
I'll second that. The only thing I think the minutes ought to reflect on the special meeting that I had to leave early.
Okay, very good.
I think I left about 15 to 20 minutes early. I had another call.
Okay. Motion to approve?
Aye.
Aye.
So moved. All business. In accordance with the executive order number 71 issued by Governor Lamont on March 21, 2020, we have to act to authorize the Board of Finance to adopt a budget for the July 20, July 1, 2020 to June 30, 2021 fiscal year, and to set a mill rate sufficient not only to pay the expenses in municipality for said fiscal year, but also to absorb the revenue deficit of such town, if any, at the beginning of said fiscal year, without holding votes recorded by ordinance or without complying with any in-person budget adoption requirements, including but not limited to annual town meetings.
Thank you. Oh, that's Chris.
Referendum to special town meeting. In so acting, the budget-making authorities in municipality, the Board of Finance shall comply with public meeting requirements consistent with executive order 7B1, included as an addendum to this agenda, and shall thereby take all responsible steps to publicize a draft municipal budget for said fiscal year and to receive public comment thereon, including but not limited to publishing draft budgets on the website and providing an email address or other means for the public to submit timely comments on the proposed budget. I get a motion to accept it and presented.
So moved Catherine.
Second Bill?
Yeah. Can we just, can we have a little, can we have a little discussion Ralph?
Sure.
Um, what are the timeframes and how are we going to address the public availability to take a look at the budget?
Well, that's up to, all we're doing is authorizing the Board of Finance to do that. I think Chuck can better, better speak to that than I can. Chuck?
Chuck on? Yeah, as far as I know, Bill, Cheryl and I have put together a tentative budget schedule with, and I'm putting this in air quotes, the referendum scheduled for the second or third of June. We're trying to delay this as long as possible to see if we can, you know, get as much public input as possible. And it is my hope that we can have some sort of vote, but I'm not positive that that's going to happen. But we're trying to give it as much time as possible to see what we can do.
Will you be putting anything in writing with a tentative schedule or anything? I know we have your, your schedule already, but I guess that's kind of a bit flexible right now.
Yeah, the, the schedule that you have is out the window. We're scheduling a special meeting for the 14th, which I have to talk to Cheryl and other powers that be about, but we're tentatively thinking of the 14th. And basically, the agenda items would be to accept the audit report and also to accept a new budget schedule. So it will be a publicized budget schedule. And in that budget schedule, we'll have how the, how the town people can access both the budget and how to respond with any comments.
So what we would want to do, I would think, is to put, get that into the Ashford Citizen for May.
Yes, I spoke to Ralph about that. And I think, I think we're all basically in agreement on that. But I need to get that budget calendar together, make sure that everybody's on board with it. And then we need to pass it at the, at our next meeting, which will be the 14th.
That makes sense.
The 14th of April or May?
I'm planning on the 14th of April. And the reason for that is that we want to get the audit accepted so that they can submit it by the 17th, which is our latest drop dead date to submit with the state.
Okay, good. And are you going to do, try to do that by go meeting also?
Yes. It'll look just like this one.
I didn't have a whole lot of luck looking at this one, but I look forward to getting it straightened out by then.
Yeah, no, this seems to work. So yeah, that's our plan is to do the same style.
You know, I was thinking Chuck, if we're, if we're going to be doing budget books like we normally do, and, and of course, we have limited access to the town hall, maybe we ought to set something up, a little box or something out in front of the town hall at the, the front door where people could pick them up if they wanted.
It was my intention and my understanding that we were going to try to limit that as much as possible and that everything would be accessed on the town website. So any sort of budget proposals or any of that would be, would be on our, our website. I, I can't remember. I think I did speak to Cheryl about, you know, printing off a few that we may need for people that, that can't get access via the internet. But I don't, I don't know that we'll need a lot of them.
No, I, I agree. I mean, I think you have at least one that I know may have two on your board that don't have access by computer or whatever, or the, or the website. So I would think just printing up a minimum amount just to have them available for those circumstances where somebody doesn't have access to a computer.
Yep, I agree.
I would expect.
That's all I had. I'm ready to move. Catherine, if you have something?
Uh, no, I would expect the same thing from the Board of Education with their budget, that they would also print up a few copies to make sure theirs is posted as well.
Yep.
Good idea.
Okay, and yes, I'm ready for you to move us to move on to a vote.
Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Motion passed. Next item of business is to appoint Memorial Day celebration organizer. Christine Abicoff recommends Tess Gross.
So moved.
Catherine, second?
Second.
Yeah, also if we could just note, Ralph, I think if we can just note that Catherine had previously mentioned, and I think I did at the same time, that if we can assist in any way, we're happy to do that.
Yes, we will. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 So moved. New business. We are going to move on to the Housing Authority. There is one regular member, poker resignation to expire 12/31/2022. The Housing Authority recommends the appointment of Anthony Iannucci to fill this vacancy. Are you motion?
So moved.
Bill?
Second, second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Just, just before we vote, have we got a letter of introduction and anything from this gentleman or from Ann Phillips?
I, I don't know.
Dennis does.
Christine?
Dennis has letters from both of them, Dennis Portis, saying that they are interested.
Okay, I have no trouble on going with the recommendation, but I think just, we've set a precedent, and I think we had a hold to it, that we'd like a, a letter of introduction at least for our files.
Well, I'll get one from Dennis when things calm down.
Okay, and then, and that we'll get all the selectmen will get copies.
Yes.
Yep.
Excellent.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. We also have.
I'll move the appointment of Ann Phillips.
Okay. Catherine, second?
We have a letter from her as well, right?
Dennis does, yes.
Uh, second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 So passed. Tax refunds. We have three. All for Connecticut General Statute 12-129, Beth Pacheco in the amount of $20, Westford G. and Georgiana Lirat in the amount of $252.76, and Beth Ann or David Rosten in the amount of $64.36. Can I get a motion?
So moved citing the statute.
Second?
Yes.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
So passed. To prove the submission of a four-year steeped opt-in letter to OPM. I'm going to read that to you. It's a little confusing, but I hope, hopefully we'll, we'll understand it. PA 05-194 allows towns to continue qualifying for Small Town Economic Assistance Program Steep Grants when they are no longer eligible to meet certain criteria. A town qualifies for steep if it has fewer than 30,000 people and the state has not designated the entire town a distressed municipality or a public investment community, PIC. The act allows towns to continue qualifying for steep grants after the state designates them a distressed municipality or PIC. The town of Ashford was designated a PIC. The town may choose to continue qualifying for steep grants only if its legislative body or the Board of Selectmen, if that body is a town meeting, approves and the town notifies OPM in writing about the decision. The town qualifies for steep grants for four years and may qualify for an additional four years, periods in the same manner. I get a motion to accept?
So moved.
I'll second that for, for discussion purposes.
Yep. Go ahead.
I noticed in here it says Board of Selectmen, if it is a town meeting. Can you clarify that?
Right now, we are acting as the town meeting. We, we were deemed that, that's what we're doing.
We were deemed that by executive order?
Yes.
Okay. I'll, I think I second that motion already.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So moved. Use of the town road race for the 2020 steeplechase ride to be held Saturday, October 15, 2020. It's an annual situation. Get a motion to approve?
Do we have the insurance certificate?
August 15. We have everything from them.
Yep.
August 15.
Okay.
Not October.
Item E, to approve the town cemetery mowing contract 2020-2023 reflecting no price increase.
So moved.
And the amount of that contract is $9,690, $9,609. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Remarks, remarks for the go to the board?
I do have something coming up. When you have a chance.
Go ahead Catherine.
I saw that on Ashford Community Connections is a terrific Facebook site where people in town share ideas and they let people know that their cat's lost or their dog or whatever, or there's some other programs that are going on. One of the things I saw this week, and I didn't get a chance to call you Ralph, is that they, it sounds like some of the people on there are planning a car parade for this Saturday through town somewhere. And I didn't know if you were aware, and I didn't know if there were any concerns about something like that without having a policeman there or something like that for traffic.
I have no idea what that, that would entail or how many cars are involved, but I think we should find out.
That's, okay, I'll get you the name, I'll get you the name of the person.
Okay.
Okay. Sheila. They were just trying to break the monotony for everybody. And it sounds like a fun thing. It's just a matter of public safety. I just want to make sure.
I understand. You're going to give me that name and address, right?
I will, I will write afterwards.
Okay, thank you. Anything else Bill?
Yeah, is Chuck still on?
Yes, he is.
I'm here.
Chuck, could you give us a quick status of the audit at the school?
There were no findings that were out of the ordinary. So I think basically we have a relatively clean bill of health as far as the audit goes. Cheryl may be able to weigh in on this as well. But that was basically the upshot of the audit. However, the process that we went through, as all of you know, was riddled with problems. And the auditors have, I think, spoken with a solid and I would say forceful convincing voice that things need to be different. And they have a number of recommendations. What I don't know, Bill, at this point exactly is how some of those would be put in place. And that's, I have not had a discussion yet with Cheryl nor the auditors live. So I don't have an update as to how to, how some of the recommendations would actually be executed.
Is this a, I'm sorry, is this a standard audit or was this the forensic audit?
This is a standard audit. We, we are not in control of forensic accounting. They were hired by the Board of Ed and, and the Board of Ed's attorney. So they have not issued a report. I have actually had communications with John Lippert several times that it is my hope that at some point when they have finished their work for the Board of Ed, that there is some sort of public record of that.
Well, I think under FOI, there has to be public record. And I know, I certainly, and I assume Catherine would feel the same. I want to take a look at a hard copy, particularly, I want to look at the whole thing, but I, I want to see what their recommendations were. I think, I think that's very important from a, a public perspective.
It's just a drastic. When our audit is conducted, they do write the recommendations up. It's part of the presentation of the results of the audit. Is that correct? Chuck?
Yes, and, and one of the things I just want to make sure everybody's really clear on is that there's two separate auditors going, audits going on here. There's the town audit that the Board of Finance and the Board of Education is engaged with, which is King, King and Associates. Because things were such a mess from the Board of Ed perspective, it was recommended by King and King that the Board of Ed engage with a, their own audit, their own accounting firm to get their book straightened out, which is what forensic accounting is doing. So they're two separate entities. So forensic accounting is not working for the town. It's working for the Board of Ed and the Board of Ed's attorney specifically.
And so. I mean, I understand that there's two reports there Chuck, but I think under FOI and the fact that public funds have been expended on both of these reports, we're entitled to copies of the written reports.
That should not be a problem.
Yeah, you'll obviously get the King and King audit. That'll be, you know, part of our annual report, et cetera, et cetera, obviously. I mean, that's, that'll be public. What I don't know is what the Board of Ed's obligation is to have that accounting firm produce a report. I don't know.
That is FOI, that's FOI. They need to have something in writing. If we're, if, if the town is paying a firm, and I, when I say the town, I mean through their budget, then they need to produce something and whatever they produce is FOI.
That would be my.
I feel strongly the same way.
Yep.
I, I feel the same.
I've certainly engaged with, with the Board of Ed a few times about, about that. I, I believe it's their intent to head in that direction.
Can, okay.
I'd like to, I'd like to, I'd like to make a motion that the Board of Selectmen formally request hard copies of both reports as expeditiously as they can.
I think you need to add something to the agenda if we're going to be countering.
Agenda and is this considered a regular meeting or a special meeting?
It says it's a regular meeting. We just haven't.
I believe it's a regular meeting.
Does it matter that the venue is different?
Maybe, I don't know.
No, it does not.
I believe the executive order covers that.
Regardless, even, even if the Board of Selectmen were not to make that motion tonight, I would look to the Board of Finance Chair to, to make it clear to the school that they need to produce that audit as well for the public.
I think we have to understand what that forensic accounting was engaged to do. And we don't have a copy of that contract. So basically, and again, I'm agreeing with everybody here that anything that they do produce, it would be nice to have that information. What I don't know is what their legal obligation. They're the ones that are engaging and they're the ones that actually asked forensic accounting to take it farther than what they needed to.
And the town is paying.
Chuck, if I may comment, that the, the difference is they're spending our public money on those. There's only two things that it could be waived from FOI. One would be potential litigation or another would be a human resource issue with personnel. From what I've been told, neither, neither of these qualify as a subject. That's why I, and I, and I've only assumed that the Board of Finance will support us, but I think we need both of our boards to stress very strongly that we want copies of both, we expect copies of both those reports.
Yes, yep, I, I would support that, obviously.
You made a motion to that.
Ralph, I'll make a motion to add discussion of the school audit reports to our agenda.
I'll second that.
All, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those are, all are.
Now, I, unless I have to reiterate it, I'll make my motion that the Board of Selectmen is formally requesting that the Board of Education submit hard copies of both of the report, audit reports that were done for fiscal 2018, excuse me, 2019, 2020.
I'll second that.
1819, okay.
Right, and the, the town will provide the normal annual report to everybody. If you wanted to leave that piece out.
I would treat that as a separate one.
Yeah, I think that, I think that's a different.
You made a motion Bill, correct? Catherine seconded it?
Yes.
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 Question? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 So passed.
Now, now I have another question Chuck, and I don't, I don't mean to be putting you in a corner because I know you, you've been certainly dealing with the Board of Education probably more than you should have to. But do we know what the financial impact of disclosure of the school, if any, is for this year's budget?
Uh, not at this point, no.
Have they talked about it at all?
They haven't had a meeting that I'm aware of. The last few meetings have been canceled. I think they're trying to get their ducks in a row to figure out how to run a meeting, would be my guess.
Okay. Yeah, I would look for an accounting of what the, what the impact is as well.
So the impact of them being closed?
Closed.
And what, how it's impacting the, this year's existing budget or next year's budget?
This year's budget to start.
I'd say both, but, but this year to start, but, and any potential impact. I don't know how they can have expectations of that at this point, but what potential impacts may be for next year.
I don't think they'll, I don't think they'll know that until we have a good sense of when some of the restrictions are going to be lifted.
You mean for next year?
Yeah. But certainly for this year, they don't, I'm pretty sure they don't intend to reopen the school during the rest of this school year. It's highly.
It may not be a big issue, but I'm thinking the impact would, we know they have to pay salaries and that. But I'm wondering what the impact is on the physical plant, electricity, heating, cooling, supplies. They have to have some sort of an impact on those numbers.
And I can't remember, and even for what I'm going to call next year's budget, whether or not they're holding summer school. I can't remember what was in their budget for next year regarding that.
They have some money.
Chuck, if you could just relay to your board on Thursday that the Board of Selectmen is discussing that, I think that would be a good idea.
Right, yep, what the impact is and, you know, if any, right. So in other words, so, you know, one of the things I would anticipate is that they're probably having to spend a little bit more digitally, you know, just to have certain programs up and running and available for remote learning. You know, there, so there's going to be, it's not only going to be on the savings quote side, less electricity, et cetera, but there's also going to be additional expenses on the flip side. The thing that I'm wondering about would be things like special ed, et cetera, et cetera, how that's being dealt with.
We'll let them tell us.
I'm sure there's, there's bound to be some offsetting expenses that are incurred that they normally wouldn't. But I'd just like to know that they're thinking about that and get an idea of what that dollar impact is, one way or the other.
Right, and so, so Bill, from your perspective, if they said, yeah, we're going to have, you know, $150,000 left over at the end of the year, what do you think about that?
I'd like to know it.
Okay.
It's, and if they were, that's too much to go into the special affectionately called 1% fund.
And, and if that's the case, that's the case, then it's got to be returned to the general fund, which I think is, is obvious.
So in a sense, I think we're getting a little bit of ahead of ourselves here. It would be good if they can give us some idea of general impact on this year's budget. If they're switching around where they're spending their money, it'd be good for them to give us a heads up, just like any department in the town.
Right, so.
And, and that's what I wanted to do. I, 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 you know, this is not an accusatory way at all. I just want them to know how we're thinking and to remind them that that's something I think that they need to be looking at.
Yep.
And for, and for that matter, and for that matter, when we go forth with this next year's budget and we put information out about it, when the Board of Finance does, there may need to be some mention of what's happened this year. So it'd be good for you to have a heads up on what that is.
Yep. So what I'll do, I'll probably make that an agenda item for the 14th and I'll invite John Lippert to speak.
Excellent.
I'll be, I'll be attending too.
I'm not surprised.
Anything else?
That's all I have Ralph, thank you, I appreciate your time. That's all I have, Ralph. Thank you. I appreciate your time.
Yeah, I really would like to ask how this meeting has gone for everyone that's involved. Christine, how about you?
I was just going to say that I think it's been terrific. Thank you. We have the materials ahead of time, so we could look at them. And this was very well organized, and I didn't have any trouble, you know, hooking in. I think it's a very good mechanism for us to use.
Very good. Christine?
Yes?
Did it go well for you?
It did. Actually, I could see you all and hear you all.
How about our visitor that's upside down?
Why am I upside down? I'm right side up on my camera.
You're upside down on mine.
You're a horse of a different color.
That says a lot, that probably says a lot about me, doesn't it, Ralph? No, I think it's great. You know, given what's going on, it's the only way we can do it, and I'm glad it's happening, and I can attend this way instead of having to sit there and bug you personally. So, no, it's good. I was actually hoping more people would come or would sign on just because it's a little bit easier than having to attend in person.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
My thanks to Mike, too, because I believe he helped get the setup. Ralph?
Mike?
Mike D'Amato.
Yes, yes, right. Mike D'Amato, right. He's not with us, but he did help us set it up, yes.
The only thing I would encourage is, if at all possible, Bill, if you can figure out how to get on with a video, I'd love to see your face.
Me too.
Well, thank you very much. Well, we know you stand on your head for this town.
Yeah, no, really. Because you know what? I bet it's because I'm on my iPad, and I probably have the iPad flipped over just to put it in the stand, so I don't know. At least I figured out how to turn it on.
That's my problem so far.
I think you're just being contrary.
I will move adjournment.
Okay, second for that?
So, second, yes.
All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you for your help.
Good to see everybody.
Thank you, folks. Have a good night and stay safe.